Good morning. It is Monday, January 26th. I'd like to call this school board workshop to order. Happy New Year first and foremost. Before we get started, we're going to have a brief moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Natalie, do we have any public input cards?
Yeah.
All right. Moving on to item 3.01, update on graduation rates. Ms. Frances Hels.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm here.
I think so. Yeah.
I don't know if you can hear you speak into it. Do a test.
Is it on test?
I don't think.
That one sounds like it's on.
They both have red. It's red. Oh, there. That one's green now. It's on. Voila. Being first.
There you go.
All right. So I'm here this morning to give you the preliminary update. The official rates have not come out from the state yet. We expect them any day. We did submit the final corrections on December 18th, which was the due date for those. Typically, once that occurs, it takes a couple of weeks for the state to turn around and then publish those official rates that we submit at that point. So without them making any corrections to what we corrected, this should be where we are for last year's graduation rates. So just as we know, we always go back to our vision statement that our whole purpose is to make sure that our students graduate with the skills necessary for post-secondary education in the workplace. And so I think our graduation rates this year, I'm very excited about where they are and what that means for our students in our district. Just a quick down and dirty, so you remember how this is all calculated. So the four-year graduation rate is an adjusted cohort. So it starts with every single student who entered Lake County schools in the last four years, whose year entered ninth grade was the 2020-2021 school year. So that's the cohort we're talking about. So that's our last cohort that really had that impact of that COVID year being kind of wonky and then getting back into school as usual. So it starts with any student who, I call them the positive withdrawal codes. So if they withdrew to another district, they withdrew to another state, they withdrew to adult, not adult ed, they withdrew to home ed, they withdrew to a private school, they come out of the cohort. They don't count for or against us. They're just eliminated from that cohort, and that's what we get, the adjusted cohort. So what's left there then is the students who either stayed with us and graduated or did not, or the students who dropped out, who ended up in some other area, some other place that did not end up counting for us. So the numerator includes all those students out of the adjusted cohort who did graduate. And then the denominator includes all the students who either graduated or dropped out, went to adult ed, chose some other option to further their education past our schools. This is a lag factor, so this information that we're presenting today will be included, even though it's last year's graduates, it will be included in this year's school grade. Okay? So these numbers will actually factor into this year's school grade. The one thing I want to point out about the numerator and something that we're looking to kind of start lobbying for a little bit is the fact that when a student withdraws to adult ed from our schools and then attains their GED, their Florida State diploma, it counts as a nongraduate. The traditional four-year route isn't always the best route for every single student. So one of the things we are looking to get some consideration for from the state is that if a student withdraws to adult ed and then does attain that GED within that four-year cohort timeframe, that that wouldn't count against us necessarily. It should, it should count as a graduate. It shouldn't count against the school district that the student chose a different option and then attained a state of Florida diploma. So that's something we're kind of looking at. But at this point, any student who leaves us, gets their GED, it counts as a nongraduate for the school that they left. Okay? So very positive news. So our overall graduation rate for the 2024 school year is a 92%. That's up 2% from the previous year, and so I'm super excited. When that number like fell out, oh, my things are all scrambled. Don't worry. That should be in order. On my paper, they look good. Okay, good. Up 2%. That is rounded. It's actually 91.7. Right? When those first numbers come out, the federal numbers, when they come out, they're not rounded. For the purpose of school grade, they round for those points for our school grades and our district grade. So that was very, very exciting. I might have shed a little small tear when I saw some of these numbers. Let's make sure this looks good. So this is kind of the, since Mrs. Carnegie has been here and has put the emphasis on that 90% graduation rate for the district and for our schools, this has been our gradual increase towards where we are today. I grade out the 1920 and the 2021 school years. Those were the years of COVID that the testing didn't count. So we had the waiver for testing for all students those two years, where you saw that pretty significant increase over those two years from the previous year and the whole state, if you recall. The whole state went up pretty significantly during those two years because of that waiver. Due to the efforts of our school leaders, our grad facilitators, our school counselors, our teachers, just across the board, that is a constant effort in making sure that these students are accounted for and are getting where they need to go. So I'm very, very proud of, when I put that on paper, I was like, ooh, like that, that shows quite a bit of effort for our schools, and I'm very proud of the work that they've done. When you take it to a school by school level, I left the five here turned in here, again, 21, the 2020-2021 years are those years where we had those waivers. So that is a little bit skewed, I would say. And then starting with the 2022, 2023, 2024, those are back to kind of our real numbers. So you can see our gradual increase in most schools as we've gotten to this year. So at this point, all but one school are above that 90% goal. I'll let you take that over a second, and then I'll explain some things.
Do we have a reason Eustace High School?
So there's a couple of things that I was looking at Eustace High School when I started breaking this down. They've had quite the turnover in their grad facilitator over the last three years. They've had probably one every 10 to 12 months, a different person in place, so I think that's been part of the reasoning there. The other thing that I noticed last year was the first year we had the CLT, the classic learning test, the new test that can work for concordant score. Eustace didn't seem to give it as frequently as some of the other schools did, which they had more certificate of completions than our other schools. Those count against you. So that was what I noticed with, if they had not had any certificate of completions, like most of the other schools, they would have been at 89%. So that was the biggest thing that I saw. We've already, they have a new grad facilitator again this year. We've already been working with him extensively. They've already offered the CLT, I want to say, two times, if not three. They're very aware that that is something that needs to happen because that is, that test, the scores are very attainable for students to graduate for concordant. So that's something they're very much focused on this year, making sure students have the opportunity to take it as well as they're being prepped for it. So I don't anticipate seeing the number of certificate of completions there again this year because they're on that. And then we're working very closely, the Red, Marlene Strawn, her staff, as well as me, are working very closely with the new grad facilitator and their leader to make sure that this doesn't slip again.
Francis, on the flip side, Lake County Virtual School, 80 to 91, huge jump up, and then Leesburg High, 86 to 91. What are they doing or individually, what went so well there?
So the main increase in everybody across the board is the CLT.
Yeah.
The number of certificate of completions district-wide was very low compared to the previous year when we didn't have that test and that opportunity. So that's your main difference. This is across the board. The CLT is what made the difference. Leesburg, they, they've been tracking. Like, they've been tracking, they've been working, they've been following those kids. They, they've just really, and their population has grown. So they have quite a few more students in their population, and they're also graduating. So that's one of their, but CLT is the primary factor just across all schools. Then Lake Virtual, they're so small.
Yeah.
Like, every, every kid is like two percentage points. So that, that really, it just depends on their population every year. I mean, if they have a population of students that are motivated and doing all their work, then they graduate. If they have three kids who don't, they drop six points, you know? So it's just their, their size is so small, it's very, it's pretty volatile how that works for them. And so these are rounded again. When you look at the, when the official ones come out, Eustace will actually should show, if I'm correct, hopefully I am, 85.8. So it'll actually come out 85.8 when it comes out in the federal, the first round that'll come out probably in the next couple of weeks.
Is there a reason that Eustace High School didn't give the CLT as much as all the other schools?
I don't have an answer to that. I don't, I don't.
So as a follow-up on what she's saying, what kind of explanation did we give school leaders to have them understand that this is something that should have happened? Because it seems like everybody else knew.
Right, right, right. We, I feel like the information was communicated that CLT is something we should be doing. Some schools went very far, were giving it very frequently, others not as frequently. I don't know that we specifically put an expectation in place that this is how many times it should be offered. It was the first year it was available, and we were all learning.
Was it monitored? That's what I'm going to ask.
I was not, I will own that I was not specifically monitoring which schools were offering it often.
Were the Reds?
Were the Reds? I don't know the answer to that.
Could you get an answer?
I could get an answer. I know I wasn't monitor, I was not monitoring like, okay, this school gave it this month, this month, this month. I did, I did not look at that. So there are some assumptions that everyone was doing the same thing. Obviously, they were not.
Yeah. I mean, that's kind of disturbing.
Correct.
Agreed.
I agree. Leesburg will actually be 90.9. Mountain Dora, 98.6. Eustace is actually, Taveri is actually 92.00. It's like on the dot. Umatilla is also on the dot, 97.0. South Lake is 91.1. East Ridge also is the 97-plus. Lake Min is 97.6, so that is a roundup for that. And then Lake Virtual is 90.9. So you'll see some of those that like look lower when that federal comes out. So I just wanted to kind of make that out there too, so it wasn't a surprise. And then the gap between all schools versus district operated is closing, as we've seen some increases. First, Ali has, when we say district operated, it's our charters versus our non-charters. Pinecrest had their first graduating class last year, that, their charter school. So that probably helped that piece a little bit. And then Ali has, just their, their denominator was actually smaller, so they had less students enrolled at the time that made it less of an impact on the overall district.
What was your graduation rate?
14%.
That was Ali.
Yeah, 14. But it was, it was smaller. I think normally they have 100 and something in their denominator. This year it was 80-something. It was a smaller group. So again, that's just, it's a less overall impact.
What were they last year?
They were 18% the year before. And that's another place where CLT was a factor, where that, that advantage wasn't there. Any other questions on that? A little bit more of kind of a breakdown, just when we think about the students not included. So in that adjusted cohort, you can see it's growing each year. We are keeping more students in through their senior year. So an increase of 423 students, like still in that adjusted cohort from the year before. So that's a lot more students like staying in our schools through senior year. Certificate completions, you can see drastically decreased, again, back to the CLT being an option now and that very attainable score. Students still enrolled also decreased significantly. So when a student is still enrolled, that is due to earning a certificate of completion, be able to come back that fifth year to fix whatever you're missing. Is it a test score? Is it a GPA? So that fifth year, so again, that's decreased. We had a slight increase in students going to, to the adult ed program in terms of about three people. So when you think, we had 305 total non-graduates from that cohort last year, and 150 of those are not considered dropouts with these numbers because they pursued other options technically. And then like just one of the reasons, I mean, all the improvement strategies, obviously we've got some gaps to fill with consistency across our schools and expectations of how certain strategies are used. But that 90% vision, everyone's been striving for that. Night school's been a big factor. I looked, I actually asked all the schools, and every single school had 20-plus students that they attribute graduation to night school. So just something to note as we're like planning forward on how we can continue to serve those students who, who have found that flexible time or that evening opportunity easier or better for them for various reasons. Like, every student I know has a different story.
So at current, are we still doing night school on every high school campus?
Yes.
And then looking at regional options or what else we can do moving forward?
Yes. Some of our different innovative programs, like Success, Lincoln Park, those have had an impact on the, on the different schools' graduation rates. Lincoln Park, we really see that starting this year with this year's cohort. This is their first year. So again, kind of watching them, making sure that they're providing all the opportunities to students that they need to be providing so that those students can graduate as well.
And they'll get their own graduation rate score?
They will, just like, well, no, they won't get their individual one because they're graded on a school improvement rating, but they will count for the district. Right? So they'll be like, LSA, I never show an LSA grad rating because they're a school improvement rating, so it doesn't, it never factors. For the school specifically, it works for the district. Same with Ali. Like, I only say that school because it ends up being such a large factor because it's a, it's a big chunk. Makes sense?
Yeah, I guess, I guess I was a little bit surprised about Lincoln Park falls into the school improvement category versus the, I mean, I know it's kind of a unique structure of the schedule, but, okay.
Yeah, it's like, in terms of the coding with the state and how we, when you apply for a school number and you set up like what that school looks like, it's actually set up the same way number-wise and, not school grade, right, but evaluation-wise as Lake Success Academy.
Because, you know, the one thing I thought was unique about Lincoln Park is that many of these students are not just identified as like being at risk or something, right? They're choosing to go to an alternative schedule and, I guess, skip a lot of the bells and whistles and frills of the full traditional diploma so that they could also do some other classes with like Sumter or Lake Tech and maybe even graduate sooner or, okay.
But it's still considered an alternative program based on the flexibility and especially once the workforce still enrollment option is available, it adds a whole different layer of opportunity for those students. And the cohort being so small, it would probably not be in school's best interest to have, to not be on a school.
Well, that was, that was where I was going with my, with my line of questioning there was, that was, yeah, small numbers, right? So.
It's going to be small numbers. And I think Lincoln Park is going to challenge us to think differently about what alternative means. Like, in our heads, alternative tends to mean students at risk, something that's discipline, behavior.
It's a penalty.
And so even for us, when we were applying for the number, it was like, but it's not alternative, but it is an alternative program.
Right.
Right? It is not your traditional school day program. And so that, even for us, as we were applying for that, we're like, oh, but, but it is an alternative educational program.
Okay.
Not in a negative connotation.
Right.
So I think that's the hard part for us because it, alternative tends to mean something else for us.
And that's exactly one of the points I've had to share with many members of the community. When they hear this alternative school, they think, oh, this is where you're putting all the bad kids, right? Here in the middle of our community. You go, no, no, no. Let's talk more about bad kids and what that really means anyway, but let's, you know, there's just a lot of that education piece that goes with that.
Obviously, continued collaboration and then just working on the continued vision for instruction. We're graduating more students every single year, and it's not just because of CLT. Students are actually, like, we are putting out students who have a higher, they have higher GPAs, they have higher SAT score. Like, we are, the instructional model is working overall with our students. So that is all I have, if you don't have any other questions for me.
I have kind of a question. When you are getting the information, could you find out how Eustace High's night school attendance compared to the other schools who were able to do better or well?
Let me see, I do have one, let me see something, if I can tell you something now. So use, okay, so I do have some numbers, specifically Eustace reported, actually, the highest number of students benefiting from night school.
The highest?
Mm-hmm. Yes. So they reported that 34 students graduated because night school was an opportunity that they were able to participate in, with the next closest being Umatilla with 29. So.
Well, it's, it's interesting that, you know, we're sitting here, and I think there's, there's a lot to celebrate here that, you know, I mean, you factor out those, those gray spots, you know, we only got the 91 time and squeaked in there 90. Here, now we're showing that's not a fluke.
Right.
And overall, I mean, that's, but despite the celebration, we can see as educators, there's always something else.
Always something.
There's always, the work never ends, you know, as we're talking about these other schools, you know, and how to get them to that point too.
Correct.
Excellent work, and I know you all have the momentum to keep going.
Correct. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Francis. Great job. All right. Next up, item 3.02, Agency for Healthcare Administration, new fingerprinting requirements. Mr. Guido Zamora.
While he's getting set up, I added this to the agenda just to make sure that the board is aware of this requirement that is now impacting all school districts as well as other governmental agencies across the state. He'll talk about the implications as well as the funding. Just know that we've already met with our lobbyists, the Superintendent's Association, and hopefully FSBA and others are also picking this up as hopefully every legislative request to help districts with the funding. You can, you'll see the cost to us. You can imagine three times that for some of the larger districts that Mr. Zamora will share with you. So this is something that I think we all need to be aware of because it is going to, and I'm glad that Catherine and Elizabeth are in the room as well, because it's certainly going to impact all of our employees, and we're going to work with everybody to ensure that this goes as smooth as possible. But we just wanted to make sure that everyone knew that this was not something we were doing, it is something that is a new state initiative, so.
Yes. Don't kill the messenger. Good morning. I felt like I'm setting up for an interview, first time I graduated from school, blind to be a teacher. All right. Well, in discussing background screenings, this was an initiative that started back in 2012, way long ago. They had established a law in 2012 to reduce duplicative screenings. In the process, they made ACHA, which is the Agency for Healthcare Administration, the parent agency. Since 2012, every couple of years or every year, they've been trying to put all their agencies under that clearinghouse, meaning they started with Department of Health in 2013, then it went to Department of Elder Affairs in 2015, so on and so forth. Fast forward to now, and one of the last ones that went in was 2016, the DJJ, Department of Juvenile Justice, joins the clearinghouse. And I'm going to start with, it's not going. part, meaning that in order for a person to be eligible for educator certification, they must have a screening background conducted by the Agency for Healthcare Administration. And that's beginning January 2025 or a later date. I'm going to say a later date for now because we are at a later date. They were not ready for the January 1st initiative. All employees will be checked under their current standards and applicable laws when it comes to have been found guilty or adjudication withheld for or has pled guilty or null of contender to any type of offense listed under that statute 435.04. I didn't want to list all the offenses, but the gist is, you know, people who are very naughty, basically.
Very tense.
Very tense. So moving on, in that statute 435.12, the background screening clearinghouse set a timeline and dates for the Department of Education. Basically, any employee for whom the last screening was conducted on or before June 30th, 2021 must be re-screened by June 30th of this year. Employees from whom last screening was conducted between July 1st, 2021, and June 30th, 2022, screened by the following year, June 30th, 2026, and so on, a third group by June 30th, So giving, giving our current way that we screen employees, applicants, is very similar to what we envision is going to happen with ACHA. A person, a district initiates the screening, the applicant applies for a job, hiring manager submits a person to hire, we will go ahead and screen the faculty or staff to be fingerprinted, send the prints to ACHA. ACHA will then review the criminal background and make an eligibility determination under the standards of that statute 435.04. Now, this will include persons that have been found guilty, adjudication withheld, null of contender. They'll review every applicant's background, similar to what we do now, only we do it in-house. We get the background report, we do it in-house right now. The clearinghouse system will also make a determination based on the disqualification list maintained by the Department of Education. Once, once an eligibility determination has Um, once it, once an eligibility determination has been made and notification is sent to the school district to check the website, they'll give us a username and access codes for that. And we will check the results on the website and basically they will let us know if the person is A, eligible, or B, not eligible, meaning we are not allowed to hire them. Right now, we're the ones that determine eligibility based on the statutes. Moving forward, they, the clearinghouse will determine if we are allowed to hire an employee in our district.
How long does that take?
Um, I'm gonna get to that. Typically, right now, they informed us that it will take 24 to 48 hours, depending on where they get the, the prints, but it can potentially take up to 10 days. So, what does that mean for us? That means basically that I have to re-screen every certification applicant that we currently have employed in our district, teachers, school-based and non-school-based positions, um, athletic staff and officials, and contractors and vendors. Right now, the focus is on employment, all employees which are direct contact to students, bus drivers, teachers, administration, district staff, and athletic coaches, obviously. Contractors, we're gonna get more information coming from them as far as vendors coming forward, but right now, the focus will be on all employees. Something that came with this, as we had meetings with the state regarding an ACHA, they provided us information. The new proposal basically requires a five-year resubmission fee to be paid upfront, which is $30. That gives an additional cost to the 1325 FBI fee that currently is existing. That changed, so that fee structure changed, and that totals 4325. And there is no guarantee that they will remain for five years with us, so we have to, every district now has to re-screen every employee and pay that five-year fee, when there's no guarantee that they're gonna be with us for five years. And reviewing fingerprint vendor contract with Filprint, right now, we're reviewing that contract. And currently, we have two LiveScan devices, one is portable. The other one, we need to add cameras to both of them, because part of the new requirement is that we have to take a picture ID, a photo of every employee that we have on, on our, employed with us. And additionally, Human Resources Department staff costs have to, you know, are gonna increase because we have to schedule employees to re-fingerprint. So, right now, we are looking at different plans, whether we open it up for employees to go to different LiveScan sites, UPS stores, and all that, schedule them to get fingerprints, or we send a staff member from our staff to go to, um, different locations based on the numbers that we have, who needs to be fingerprinted. If it's bus drivers, I will send a staff member to the bus lot to get fingerprint all the bus drivers.
And how long do we have to complete this? I'm sure you're getting to that, but...
Yes, um, three years. There's three groups.
Got it, okay, but the first group, it's
That's
By June, that's right, June of 2025.
Correct.
Yep, gotcha.
Clearing, the clearing processing time, basically, they've told us it was gonna take 24 to 48 hours, but they've also said that if the person has a background and they need to get additional information from the applicant, it could potentially take seven to 10 days. Um, that will impact our hiring timeline. There is an exception eligibility. A lot of districts are concerned that once we start fingerprinting employees, we are on new guidelines of employment, they were totally different 20 years ago. So, we're gonna find employees that may have something in their background that, on their current statute, is not eligible for employment. And, but it was eligible back 20 years ago. So, um, that is something that ACHA is going to be addressing with every district. They say that they're gonna provide us an exemption criteria for those employees that they find, but they have not given us the details as of yet. Will employees with disqualifying charges on record be allowed to continue? They have verbally said yes, but there's gonna be some guidelines that we need to follow. Charter school employees follow the same requirements. Furthermore, and I, and I say charter schools here, because ACHA has informed every district that FDLE will be issuing all charter schools their own ORI number, their originating agency identifier, for them to be able to fingerprint their own employees. So, we don't know what that looks like. Currently, we fingerprint, for example, Lake Tech, Lake Technical College, we fingerprint their own their ORI number for the agency, because there are our employees under Lake County. But employees from the Minnella Charter, mascot, the other charter schools, they're no longer employees of Lake County schools. So, they have not provided us those instructions, but that's coming for them to be able to fingerprint their own employees. Now, in looking at the statute, statute 435.08 says that the employer or the employee is responsible for paying the cost of screening. Now, obviously, all employees pay their initial screening cost, currently set at 7325 when they first got hired with the district. It used to be less, 20 years ago, obviously, but throughout the years, right now, currently, it sits at 7325. And in working with our vendor, the new updated employee costs to be able to submit prints to the new clearinghouse is 8925. I did the breakdown, it's $12 for the collection, $10 for the photo, FDLE and FBI fees, 6725. All three groups, if I look at our current employing, employees in our district, looking based on the due dates that they gave on or before 630, 2021, the last submission for fingerprints, we have a total, based on people that we've paid through December, about 1,318 employees. That, that puts it around 325 employees per month that we need to fingerprint to meet that deadline by June 30th. The following year, we have 1,163, and then the three years, basically 4,162. So, we are working, our, our department is working on making a plan to meet that criteria right there, but because the cost, basically, it's going to be around 118,000 the first year, about 104,000, and the biggest year would be the 372,000. And the only thing ACHA has told us is that they've given options to districts based on their budget and how they're gonna move forward with this process to meet the deadlines. Um, some districts are looking, big districts such as Miami, they're looking at chunking it out, moving some of those current employees they have on the first year, resubmiting now at a lower cost, $12 per employee, so that they can prepare themselves later on, two years from now, to be able to fingerprint them. Um, we're looking at, we can, we are not in, in bad shape, we can meet the deadline for the first couple of years, I don't foresee an issue. Our biggest concern will be making a dent on the 4,162 employees that we have due by 2027.
This, the, the, the cost estimates on this particular table, is that based on the 8925 or is that based on this 4325?
8925.
Yeah. So, so the 4325 is five years from now when they have to renew again? I'm try, I'm, I'm struggling to track this 4325.
No, when we do the retention, we do pay the 12, the, I believe it's $12. There's other fees that are set aside.
So, when does the 4325 get paid?
Now.
Now, so we're gonna pay that now? 73?
No. We, right now, we pay 7325 because that's our vendor. Our vendor is the one that provides the equipment for us to submit fingerprints. So, the 4325 is just for, um, the five-year resubmission fee to be paid upfront, which is a $30, and the FBI, so it's a $30 fee to submit, resubmission fee that they have.
So, that's part of the 8925?
That's part of the 8925.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
All right, so all of our employees, they're gonna cost 8925, either whether they're new or whether they're
Yeah, because I'm resubmiting, I'm taking a picture
Okay, got it.
Of every employee and I'm resubmiting with a five-year resubmission fee.
I'm tracking now, thank you.
What is the fee that they're charging us? How much per person?
That's the 8925.
And the actual cost is what?
Um, clearinghouse
If we did it ourselves?
We can, because we don't have the, we have to have a vendor to provide that. We don't have that. We're looking at, to see what it will cost us to go separate from our vendor.
That's what I was going with.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have that right now. We're looking at options, because our current vendor for fingerprints, we have one more year left in the contract, so that is the, and we're getting equipment to meet the fingerprint and that's the new cost, 8925.
Why are you anticipating an uptick, like, that they'll find employees? Did that list change? Remember the list of odd people we were talking about earlier? Did they add things to the list or did they change the eligibility requirements for certification? Is it that different?
No, this is just a background, this is just background. The new fingerprint requirement by DOE is that we have to move everybody under the ACHA clearinghouse. And right now, they're not under that clearinghouse.
Right. I just, when they moved that clearinghouse, you said, suggested they might find some things or some employees that would be
Correct. Once I fingerprint an employee that had a background, that, that had a criminal background, let's say 20 years ago, the standards 20 years ago are not the same standards that
That's what I was asking.
Correct.
Well, so they've changed to make them a little bit more stringent?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Can we see that? Is that in the statute that you referenced in the packet?
Um, that is the statute. If you go to the statute 43, um...
Yeah, you wrote it down in here, it's at the beginning.
435.
43512.
12, yeah, there's a statute that lists all those offenses.
Okay.
And I can forward them to you, I can forward you that statute to you.
Okay.
There was a, a mention here about volunteers, so they all have to be
Correct.
Talking about that.
So, right now, the, the first phase is employees. Volunteers is due next year, they're gonna start a process for volunteers. And, but DOE has not informed us how, what that process will be. DOE said that we have to start January 1st, right now, they've extended it to March 1st, because they've been trying to get ready for the influx of every district submitting new fingerprints. And we have a lot of concerns. All districts, we've met, we've met together as a consortium, we've met with ACHA. ACHA has had a, a conference call with us, per se, and they've explained to us, we are waiting on them to provide us initial, um, guidelines as to how we're gonna begin.
Okay, so when, so let me understand, so, so when DOE sets whatever, currently it's March 1st, but they might change that date again, for any new volunteers, they would fall under this? And then they're eventually gonna create a timeline to go back and retro all the other vol, all volunteers?
Volunteers, we don't know what the process looks volunteer, they haven't given us any instructions on volunteers.
But that would be another added cost.
That will be another, potentially, that could be another added cost.
Okay.
So, we don't know that, because I, I cannot speak, because DOE has not given us
Right, right.
Guidelines for that.
But they will have to be re-
But they will have, next is the next one. First is the, first is Department of Education, next year starts the process for, they'll start possibly mid, mid this year, they'll start communicating with us how we're gonna start filtering Level 2.
And substitutes follow in there as well?
Correct. Employees, our numbers that I provided you, the 1,318, has, um, all our employees currently, substitutes are also included in that number, and, but it does not, and Lake Tech employees that fall within our ORI. That 1,318, which is the first group, does not include charter school employees or private schools. I do not know how many of those we have.
You know, they are the same requirement that
They have the same requirement by law.
When you consider a vendor, might you consider all of the government agencies that we have that, that are in Lake County to possibly come together to get that price down a little bit?
Um...
They all have to resubmit to the same clearinghouse, right?
Correct. And I just don't, you'd still need, um, a registered licensed vendor to be able to submit to that clearinghouse.
Yeah, yeah, no, I know that, but I didn't know if it would be beneficial if they all got together to say, we're gonna look at some vendors together to decrease
Are there multiple vendors that do that?
Yes, there's multiple vendors that do that. Filprint is one of the largest ones in the state, and multiple counties do, um, use Filprint, but there's other vendors. It's just, we, we, right now, we have a contract with Filprint and we're trying to work with them to see how that contract will look like or what other avenues we can follow to reduce the cost.
So, does that, does that vendor receive part of that 8925 or do we pay that, an additional amount to the vendor?
That's the total amount, 8925, I believe 6720, I will have to get back to you on the exact number, but there is a portion that goes to the vendor.
Okay. So, it's not, not above and beyond the 8925?
Correct.
Okay.
It's the, yes.
A little bit of really built in, that's
It's built in.
But I don't know what that built in is.
So, how does the 8925 compare to, say, LiveScan like the Chamber of Commerce does or the UPS, some of those people? Because I happen to know Osceola uses, um, whatever the city of Eustace gives, because for my charter school, they've already started, and that's where I had to go. Um, and I don't think it was this much. So, how does this cost compare with
The lowest amount that it can possibly be is 6725, because that's directly with the clearinghouse.
Okay.
That is the lowest amount.
And maybe that's what they use, because it wasn't this much.
Correct. Every district is different, but there's all the districts that are more. Okay, we're in the middle, because Miami, they charge us 97 and something so.
So, are we comparing, looking for someone who's cheaper than the 8925 or are we going with them because
Right now, we have a contract, that's our vendor, right now
For now.
For now, for now, that's our vendor.
But we are gonna consider
We're gonna consider other avenues, correct.
Is there a way to be our own vendor? If there, if it's cost effective?
We're looking into it.
Okay.
I think the cost then is, becomes all the equipment.
The equipment, right.
And that was, I, I, just from the conversation with other districts, that, that was very costly as well.
Correct.
Well, you got the equipment, you gotta, you have hired administrators.
Yeah, there's a lot of, a lot of cost, right?
It may or may not be cost effective.
See, that 8925 includes that, includes, we have two LiveScan machines, which right now, with the new fee structure that the clearinghouse has submitted to every, every, to every Department of Ed, um, site, they're just, we're right now adding just the two cameras to that system, and then instructions on how we are supposed to submit those pictures. So, we are considering adding a third, um, machine, because we gotta meet the demand of making sure we fingerprint everyone.
But right now, so that I'm straight, they provide the equipment, they do the submittal, we, we supply the personnel to take the fingerprint?
Correct.
And the photograph?
Correct.
Okay. And who manages those people that are doing that function? You?
Me.
Okay, so you can take over. But, but if the six, back to the numbers, 6725, that's the raw cost that
The raw cost from the clearinghouse.
So, the, so the fungible number is in the photograph at 10 and the fingerprint collection at 12.
Correct.
Because the fee's built in.
Correct.
Um, and we could do a request for proposal? At this point, you gotta jump on it? If we see that there's other vendors that do it?
Um...
What, how long is our contract with those folks?
We have one more year left on our contract. After this year, we have, I believe, the following year.
It certainly would be interesting to go ahead and get a request for proposal at this point, so that
Correct.
And also weigh the cost of us doing it in-house. That'd be really good information.
Mm-hmm.
And then, and then to this cost, because this is a huge number.
Mm-hmm.
Is that going through safety and security? Is that a funding source, possibly?
Um, that typically, this goes through HR, has been our source when it comes to fingerprint, we pay
I'm just looking for the funding source.
The funding source, yeah.
Yeah.
This is capital right now, right?
Correct.
No, sir, it's operating.
Excuse me?
No, sir, it's operating.
It's operating.
General fund.
But it seems like there is a strong safety component to this, if you're screening these people.
I don't disagree with you. And we haven't discussed that yet, but I think it's something worth discussing, absolutely.
Yeah.
Because I think the 0.75 bill that you could look at that. But we also have a lot of other things using that money.
No, 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 no. I was just looking for if, which pot it was coming out of?
Yes, sir.
Or potentially could come out of.
Yes, sir. We will look at that.
Yeah, that pot's pretty full, too. So it would be a matter of, something might have to shift out of there if we're going to then pay for this out of there. So, it's, at the end of the day, it's still all operational dollars.
Right.
So I think our best hope would be that the, our Florida Legislature, as they are doing appropriations this year, that they would consider providing districts some additional funding to help cover the cost. That is our best hope.
So are we asking them to put it in the FEFE?
We're asking them to, we're asking right now for separate appropriations specifically, just like they do for school safety and security and mental health and other things, some additional funding to help offset costs. Because this has a huge financial impact on all of the school districts.
Because we typically take care of the fingerprints, the renewals for our existing employees, but new employees would pay this amount?
Correct. New employees pay that amount.
You know, the one group of employees is a very small number, but I'm going to mention out there just because it's a significant portion of percentage of their overall check. When we hire summer workers who work like a total of like 10 or 14 days, and we ask them to pay $90, it's like, I don't know, what percentage of that, like 10% of their entire earnings goes to fingerprinting?
Typically, when they hire student workers, we do not...
If they're students.
If they're students.
Right.
If they're students.
Typically, but are you going to be allowed to do that?
Yep, we can pay.
We can, yes. As a district, yes, we can do that.
And how do we get around 435.44?
No, we are paying. The district is paying.
We just don't charge the...
We don't charge the applicant.
We're charging.
Yeah, we're paying. We're still paying for it. Yes, correct. Thousands of people for background checks. It's...
...of the financial impact. And it is an estimate.
Frigilate.
Large, and not have the budget in for that would be the instructional materials adoption, which has been occurring over time each year. And the district's been very, the instructional materials adoption, which was much higher than the allocation, we had additional funding sources to cover that. This year will be the first year that you won't have additional funding sources to cover that. So I thought it was important to discuss that and clarify that because as the next couple of years' adoptions come up, this one being more than what the current allocation would be, but next year being the very large one, being the ELA adoption, you know, you have to consider that when you're thinking about what you're approving with the instructional materials adoption. We allocate around $2.5 million per year out of the general fund to cover that. That's based on the dollar per student that we were being funded before they rolled it into the FEFE. So what we do in our budget process each year is we take the number of students that we estimate to be in our traditional schools, and we multiply it by that number, and that's the instructional material budget that we put in. Instructional Materials has been rolling forward some money year after year. So this last year for the 24, 25-year adoption, with the allocation and their roll forward, they had about $4.9 million to spend. The adoption that was approved for the 24, 25-year was about $5 million. So they had sufficient funding to cover the 24, 25-year adoption. What becomes confusing with instructional materials is we actually, per statute, we're allowed to actually place those orders prior to that budget year coming up. And that's so we can get the orders in over the summertime and get them distributed out to the schools so that they're available, hopefully, day one when school starts. So what we've done in the past and what we continue to do, propose to continue to do, would be we would release the subsequent year's budget and the preceding year around April. So we would advance some of that budget. And it's based on 90% of what the budget was in the previous year. So 90% of the previous year's budget will be released in April. That way, they can go ahead and get their orders in place. And then the manufacturers can deliver the books, and the books can be distributed to the schools, hopefully, prior to beginning the school year. So we'll continue to do that this year. So the 24, 25 adoption was sufficient, but we will have to put some money in the spring to cover the 25, 26-year adoption, just as we've done in the past. So while we're talking about that, any questions, any further questions on the instructional materials or the contract versus budget? I'm sure Mr. Dodd has some.
Yes, yes. And I know you didn't have the gift of being there at that meeting. So, you know, I think wisely, we foreheld any discussion to hear straight from the experts rather than all just kind of hypothesize. But I think a lot, some of my questions stemmed from a conversation that you and I had had about if there was an adequate, there was an adequate amount of money in the instructional materials budget to cover the science adoption. For instance, this year, I was just kind of having flashbacks to previous science adoption where we had to split it into different years. Some grades received it one year, some grades received it the following year. And then you'd explained to me that the, when I see the fiscal impact on the board docs, that that, there might not necessarily be enough money available for that. We're not approving the money. We're just approving the adoption of the specific materials. And so then I thought, well, how in the world am I supposed to know if there's enough money or not? Because, yes, we do receive these, you know, it's typically once a month, I think, we see the list of budget amendments. But I don't think it really goes into enough detail to know, wait, is there enough money for this particular contract? Or am I going to see a budget amendment about that? Or, I, how do I know? How do I know whether the money I'm seeing as the fiscal impact is money we're actually making available?
So I think, I think what's happened since the ELA adoption, the last cycle, is we've had the additional funding in place. So the budget wasn't an issue. I think this is going to be the first year budget's going to be an issue. And so, and also, in the past, when we didn't have, and this was explained by the instructional materials manager, in the past, we didn't have so much of a cost associated with the electronic version of the books. And we're actually having to pay for that upfront, and it's during the adoption cycle. So in the past, they probably can explain this better than I can, but if you didn't adopt, you could extend it, you can extend a year. You can take your books and you continue to use them, and then you could spread that out so that you could smooth out your adoption process. So you didn't have to buy all the books at one time. So you may do it at certain grade levels, and then the next year, add some more grade levels to cover that. The problem with that, that we can no longer do, that we have been able to do in the past, is the electronic versions are subscriptions per year. And then if you add that year and carry that book forward, you're going to be paying a lot of extra money for the electronic version of those books to be available. And they really kind of stick it to you on that. That's kind of, in my opinion, their backhanded way to make sure that you're buying the books on cycle. And if you don't, there's a fiscal penalty for not doing so. They can probably explain that better to you in the subsequent meeting to this one, when they're talking about instructional materials. But that is something that is a concern. So, yeah, and so this year, as you're making the decision to purchase these materials, keep in mind that, you know, if we are going to do it all at once, unless if they've come up with an additional funding source, it will all have an additional impact to the general fund that it normally hasn't had in the past.
And I think that's one question we've almost always have asked in the workshop. You know, so we end up seeing the fiscal impact slide, and it always falls short. And I think we always say, and we're making the rest of that general fund, and there's like a bunch of nods, and we go, okay, so we're going to proceed. But the school board itself is not voting on those specific funds. So when we get to the agenda item, following week or whatever it is where we officially adopt those materials, I guess we're not, we're giving, we're giving the blessing to say, "These materials are adopted," but we're not giving any sort of mandate to say, "Now go buy them for all grade levels of what we just approved." So now, since we're not approving any money with that. So then is it left to staff to decide, okay, we're going to do 35 this year, K2 next year, and the school board doesn't really, is not part of that decision process? Or how does that work?
Well, I think that's up to the school board. If you'd like to go ahead and make that, that process, part of the process, that's fine. I think, I think the difference this year with instructional materials is we don't have the alternative funding source to cover the difference. So either we find $2.5 million in funding source, or we spend additional $2.5 million out of our general fund to cover that.
All right.
So probably for the next meeting?
Yes, sir.
I was speaking about this last night. We're going to be talking about it. Why are we still buying books in today's world? Why don't we do it all electronic? So that will be the next.
Okay, I was saying, can we hold that to the next meeting, to the experts? Well, we'll let the experts answer that one. So I wanted to do a quick financial review, and I've got a couple of slides here, but I thought it would be good to start out the conversation because we're getting ready. After I get up, the RSM, the auditor's going to come up and talk about risks associated. And one of the topics that did come up was instructional materials, and I think it's a very good topic to look at. But I wanted to talk a little bit about our financial, what we've been experiencing the last couple of years. There's been a lot of changes, a lot of differences, obviously, with the additional funding sources of ESER. We've added some things. We've had a lot of additional funding. So I kind of wanted to give you kind of a bottom line overview of what the impact of ESER's had on our general fund, and it's been very positive. If you'll recall, several conversations about ESER, I said, and I think we all understood, that we were going to try to use as much of the ESER funding to supplant our general fund so that when ESER funding went away, that we would be in a good financial situation. It wouldn't be like the old Arrow days, 2012, when all of the federal dollars went away and the state funding was low, and then all of a sudden, most school districts started experiencing financial difficulties. So we really did try to spend as much on the general fund as we could and still have an impact with the ESER dollars. So, regular positions by year, you can see we started out a little over $10.2 million. These were positions that were in the general fund, that were existing positions, that we moved to the ESER and charged them there. A lot of that had to do with class sizes. A lot of that had to do with the year that not everybody had to report brick and mortar, but we still continued to fund those teachers' positions and kept everybody whole, mainly because we didn't want to lose it. We hoped that it would be temporary, and those students would come back brick and mortar, which they did. And you can see throughout the year, as more and more students come back and as other needs came in, that number dropped. You'll see $3.6 million in '24, '25. That $3.6 million was really prior year expenditures that we transferred at the end to make sure that the last couple of months that we had of ESER, we didn't have any ESER left on the table for those couple of programs that were, the large ESER programs. Same thing with instructional materials, '21, '22, we spent $8 million instructional materials. '22, '23, we additional $5 million. '23, '24, $1 million. And '24, '25, $400,000. And then instructional softwares, you actually can see some of that increasing over time because we were adding some softwares. That '24, '25 number, a lot of those softwares were bought with multi-years, so they're going to have an impact in the future, too. That was something that USDA and UBE allowed us to do, and so we took advantage of that when we could. Summer school, not a whole lot there. And then, big in '21, '22, and then declined throughout the years, obviously, was custodial maintenance supplies. We were given additional allocations for custodial maintenance supplies, just because we knew that the schools were doing a lot more cleaning. We were putting a lot more towels out, paper towels. We're doing a lot more cleaning supplies, stuff like that. As that kind of went away, we reduced that, that funding down. So you can see, '21, '22, we supplanted almost $21 million into our general fund. '22, '23, $17 million. '23, '24, almost $9 million. And then '24, '25, $6.5 million. I also included at the bottom, because it wasn't really supplanting, it was additional, the insurance fund coverage to make sure that we were keeping our insurance fund whole. We did $4.7 million in '22, '23. And then at the end of '23, '24, we did $10 million to make sure that our insurance fund stayed at that 120-day. Now, we've made some adjustments since then. We've increased our contribution. We've also made some changes in our plans, and it seems to be helping us keep that cost down. So hopefully, at the end of this year, we won't see a large transfer into the insurance fund. So, I wanted to show you kind of the impacts of what that's had on our fund balance. If you look at the top group, that is what our actual fund balances have been for the last five years. You can see, '19, '20, we were at 5.6. '20, '21, we were at 10.3. '21, '22, we were at 14.56. 15.9 for '22, '23. And '23, '24, we ended at 15.38. If you take these expenditures that we just went over, and you take them out of the general fund, or you put the expenditures back into the general fund, I apologize for saying it in reverse. So if you put those expenditures back into the general fund, not including the insurance fund transfer, you would see what's really been going on without the ESER in our general fund. So you could see, we were at 5.67. 10.33 for '20, '21. '21, '22, 8.93. '22, '23, 5.76. And then '23, '24, 4.82. So I don't do that to scare the board or raise a lot of alarm or red flags or anything like that, but this is just what our financial picture would have been if we would not have had the ESER funding to help our general fund out. So I say all of that to keep that in mind as we make decisions in this upcoming budget season, that we don't think that, oh, we've got a 15% fund balance, we can start adding reoccurring expenditures to that 15.38, because it won't be long before we'll be back down to 4% and 5%. So, just wanted to keep that in mind. And just a kind of a list of ongoing concerns about the future, obviously, the ESER funding cliff, which we just talked about, scholarships, charter school, FTE, school enrollment. Our school enrollment seems to be kind of flat, maybe a little bit increasing. So not a lot of, not a lot of enrollment coming in to the traditional side of our district. Base student allocation, we don't have a lot of information for the upcoming year for base student allocation. What we do have is Commissioner of Education's budget request, and the Commissioner of Education put a $50 increase in on the base student allocation. That $50 increase also comes with the TSIA amount. That's $56. So it's not even enough to cover the mandated TSIA. So just keep that in mind. And that's, doesn't anything, doesn't have anything to do with the address for the increase in insurance or increase in our FRS. That could be coming up, which is an unknown at this point in time. So just kind of some things that we're concerned about, obviously. And then any other unfunded mandate, like Mr. Zemmour just went over, that could be coming up in the near future. So just wanted everybody to kind of keep that in mind as we're thinking about what we're going to be doing and talking about in our upcoming budget sessions.
What is TSIA?
The teacher's salary increase allocation. So that's the mandated teacher salary increase amount. We've exceeded that over the last couple of years. But, but just to kind of give you an idea, what the commissioner put in their budget doesn't even make up enough to cover that amount. Fortunately, our legislators have given us more than that amount to cover that in the last couple of years. So we're hopeful that they'll continue to do that.
Is that thing in there?
No, sir. It's not. Any other questions?
Happy New Year.
I, again, I want to say it again. I'm not trying to use a lot of fear, scare tactics to, you know, I want everything to be operated as going, you know, we should be going. But just keep in mind that, you know, if we start adding a lot of reoccurring expenditures, it will cause that fund balance to start coming down, trending down.
My takeaway is, is that you've done an amazing job of managing...
100%. I appreciate that.
Particularly our reserves, because I can remember when we were at jeopardy at one point.
Yeah.
And had to have a strategy of building it back up. So, forget about 15. If you're saying at 4.8, I think we're good to go.
Okay. On that note, your internal auditor's group is here today, RSM. They have worked extensively with you guys and the staff on developing a risk assessment. And they're going to go over that with you this morning. And I think that's very timely because as we are looking at our budget upcoming, we, it's always good to look at our current operations and try to find areas that we might be able to save some money. So I will turn it over now to RSM, and I'll let them introduce their individual selves as they come up.
Thank you, Mr. Ward.
Might we take five minutes for a restroom break while they're transitioning?
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
Good.
Receiving the award. This, as Weiss mentioned, is almost always included on a high-risk areas of focus because of the dollar volume that we're talking about here. So it's kind of one of the foundational audit areas that we like to talk, touch on. And it also allows us to speak with different departments, different users, different schools, so we can assess, okay, what is the procurement and purchasing conversation across the district? Not just coming from the purchasing department, but what does that look like once it's disseminated outwards? The next area here, like I mentioned, on page 10, is contract compliance. So this really picks up after competitive procurement, and we're looking at, okay, now we have a contract in place, how are we managing that contract? This is almost always a very decentralized process. I know right now, we don't currently have a centralized contract management software, which just means that we really need to rely on a lot of manual controls and a lot of cross-departmental communication to make sure that your purchasing team, your legal team, they know what's going on. Your IT team may need to be involved, depending on the contract. And then also, the end-user department or school, making sure that they have the tools that they need to make sure that if we have a contract in place, it's being reviewed. The invoices that are coming in from that contract are being reviewed appropriately. We're not having different rates between the contract and the invoice itself. So it's really, like I mentioned, after the contract has been executed, all the way through, work has been done, payment has been made, and then hopefully there are no disputes. But if there are, how are those disputes handled with the vendor, and how are we evaluating the vendor? If there are any service-level agreements, for example, some contracts, as you can imagine, will have very specific reporting requirements from the vendor. So we just want to make sure that the district team, all of the district teams, know exactly what they're asking from the vendor, and they have a good control structure in place to make sure they're consistently requiring that vendor to perform the way that they said they would. So that's, that's high-level contract compliance. And please feel free to pause me at any point. Otherwise, I'll just kind of go through all 10, and we can circle back with any specific questions. Perfect. The next one here, on page 11, is the cybersecurity maturity assessment. I will note here, based on our, on our interviews, the control structure in this area seems to be pretty strong. Of course, we haven't looked at anything, we haven't tested anything, and we almost always have at least one, up to three sometimes, on the top 10 high-risk areas of focus related to IT. But we wanted to be sure that this particular item on here was really specific to you all. So if we believe we have a strong control structure, that's fantastic. This type of maturity assessment would take a look at, okay, where are we now? And where do we need to be in five years, in three years, in 10 years, based on our growth, based off of the use of different systems and applications we're using? If we are, for example, using more computerized instructional materials, just kind of full circle here, what's our mechanism in place to make sure we're taking that into account from an IT perspective as we change and evolve? So this type of, this type of engagement would really provide kind of like a roadmap, a roadmap to determine our current readiness and our direction moving forward from an IT lens specifically.
And I'll, I'll just add in our conversations with Dwayne, there's already many great IT-focused audits that are taking place, so this isn't to imply that, that they aren't, right? This is, this maturity assessment actually is, is the back end of that. It's maybe an opportunity to benchmark against other districts, really, to see where there may be any opportunities. So just wanted to add that clarity, based on our conversations.
The one thing I wanted to ask and put forward, we're only going to pick, how many of these, 10?
So it'll be based on budget, but I, we would expect two, is based on our initial conversations.
Make sure everybody understands, we only have two out of 10.
And that's for the entire 25, 20, like, 2025?
For the upcoming fiscal year, correct. Autoplane.
Fiscal year, which is not 2025, the entire 20. Are you talking about July 1st to June 30th? We get two audits.
Yep, we would be completing these two audits, basically, within the next, ideally, six months.
Okay.
And then, after that, starting a whole new audit plan and selecting whichever others.
Reselect.
Thank you.
And this reassessment stays intact?
So yes, this is a live document, though. I just want to add that, right? Risk will change and evolve, right? The same primary concerns today may not look the same in six months, but this is the blueprint, right? This is the baseline that we'll use moving forward, so we don't have to completely perform a complete reassessment.
Sorry, you have a moment?
No, no, that's good questions. All right, page 12, facilities construction. Again, always a topic of conversation, but especially here at Lake, we have so many new construction projects, or just renovations of existing structures. So huge dollar amount here, lots of contracts as well in place with different vendors. This type of review would be taking a look at, one, the procurement of goods or services, so maybe that's a contracting perspective, or maybe it's true goods that we're talking about here. But mostly a focus on project management activities. So that would include pay application reviews. As some of you are probably aware, those pay applications can be very, 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 very long. And making sure that we have a solid control structure in place to review, take and tie. Okay, if we're getting an invoice for $500,000 on this pay application for a steel structure, what's the mechanism in place to make sure that steel structure is actually there, it's being used, it's accounted for, for the right project? Included in here is also project monitoring, change order review. If we do have any change in scope, how is that handled? Changes in funding, how is that handled? How is that brought to you all for review? Vendor performance monitoring, and the project closeout process. Typically, these types of reviews, we can also include kind of an analysis of budget-to-actual overall on construction projects, or an analysis of our completion timelines for a sample of facilities projects as well. But like Weiss mentioned, those types of fine-tuning in the scope would be brought forward in a statement of work, so we can decide exactly which direction we're going to go through here.
And one thing to note on this, too, is we'd like to get in there not when the project is closed. We'd like to get when it's a live project, so you can see how your pay applications are being monitored, being paid prior to that closeout, be able to catch any of those anomalies, et cetera.
Yep. All right, page 13 is facilities maintenance. Here, one, one important thing I want to note, again, this is frequently on our top 10 high-risk areas of focus, especially for our first iteration. But specifically, we do have a new work order management, FMX, tool. Anytime there's new software, again, kind of like what Clara mentioned with an ongoing live construction project, if we have an ongoing implementation, that's also a good time for internal audit to come in and take a look, make sure that the controls are operating from the get-go of that new tool before we are implementing it three years down the road, and the, the controls in the system were not ever operating the way maybe they were designed to. So, so new software here, that's always something to just kind of keep in the back of our mind. But this type of audit would be taking a look at that maintenance work order system, taking a look at detailed, doing some detailed testing on a sample of actual work orders, looking at their approvals, the expenditures associated with each work order, prioritization of work orders, and adherence to any preventative maintenance work order schedules, to make sure that if we have a system in place, what's the reporting that comes out of it? What are the controls going from the actual worker completing the task to the supervisor review of that task, so that we don't end up district-wide with any sort of backlog or inadequate reviews in place of work being completed throughout the district? Right?
I'll just add, this is a really common audit we perform, because what we find is certainly if there's a new work order system, there may be a lot of things that need to be flushed out. We find, you know, prioritizing work orders can be challenging, how, how they do that, there's a cost associated with not having a, a clear methodology that's being followed. So just want to highlight, this is certainly a common area that we, that we look at.
And did you, in our conversation, did y'all go back and look at prior audits? Because we spent an awful lot of time on facility maintenance, our prior auditor did.
We do have some very high-level kind of risk assessment reports that we're able to take a look at. And to your point, if we were to start in a facilities maintenance project, we'd want to make sure we're doing a detailed review of what has been done in the past, but we'd also would want to make sure that we're retesting, especially if there's a new system, a lot of that old information would not 100% be applicable. But it's just good context for us to know, and things that we kept in mind when we were putting together this top 10.
We try not to over-rely on the previous audit reports where we can, because, especially in this condition where we have a new system, the controls are likely very different, the processes are likely very different, so we didn't want to exclude it on the, on the, on the condition that it's been looked at in the past exclusively.
Where I'm coming from is, understanding we can only pick two, that to have this one in the top 10, when we, we had a lot of energy spent, and I had mentioned that to y'all, that that was really where our past auditor gravitated to, that I would have, I wouldn't have thought it would have made the top 10. That's all.
Yeah, but it was prior to the new system, so we, we're looking at people, process, and technology whenever we're doing a risk assessment. And so whenever we have those significant changes, those, whether that process has been looked, looked at in the past or not, it kind of raises that level of risk, especially when you have a significant system implementation as well.
I'm sorry, you're saying we've made significant changes in our software?
Well, the, the new work order system, there's a new work order system in place, so that kind of raises the risk for us whenever we're looking at processes.
Okay, I thought that was one of the recommendations from one of the audits. So, it's fine, it's fine.
Yep, the only thing I'll, I'll clarify there is, the system had really been, been put in place, I believe it was a few months ago, it might have been October, so.
Oh, this is another new system?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, yep. All right, fleet maintenance and management. This particular audit area would be taking a look, again, at how we are tracking, recording, and managing the district's fleet. We do know here that the current fleet is managed by two teams, maintenance and transportation. That's not very common, I'll say. Normally, we have the white fleet managed by one team. So if we have two teams, not, nothing wrong with that, as Clara mentioned, it's not saying there's something wrong with this process. But one of the areas that we would focus on with this type of review would be to make sure if there are economies of scale that we can take advantage of, that we are, and that we don't have two teams kind of operating in a silo, perhaps with the same contract, or the same vendor with two different contracts, or two different vendors doing the same work, kind of there's collaboration between those two teams, when we're talking about vehicle acquisition, vehicle disposal, and then inventory maintenance as well. I will also mention here, because of the geographical size and layout of the district, we do have seven fueling sites. That is a little bit on the, the higher side, but of course necessary, given the, the length. But we would want to make sure that those different fueling sites, as part of this audit, are being monitored and tracked, and any activity happening at those fueling sites is being managed appropriately. The next two areas, human resources offboarding is the first one. Right now, a rough estimate here, the district may be processing about 85 terminations per month. That may include resignations, may include retirements, any number of reasons for an employee exiting the district. And of course, the HR department is sole, is primarily responsible for managing that process, but there is always collaboration needed from the different schools and departments that employee works with, and then from IT, safety and security as well, so that when a employee is leaving the district, the district assets are collected appropriately. If we're having an exit interview, we want to make sure we're getting the most out of that data, if we can make any determinations on the retention side as well. So this is, those are some of the topics that an offboarding area would be looking at. Also be looking at the timeliness between when a termination occurs, how quickly we're able to pick up those district, district assets, and again, the collaboration between the different departments, including dispersment of final paychecks, I didn't mention that earlier, but making sure all of those things are happening seamlessly and quickly when someone is exiting the district. Human resources onboarding, as if the HR team didn't have enough going on, I do know that they have also implemented a new applicant tracking system, which of course, we hope that's going very well and is being a benefit, but similar to, similar to maintenance, anytime there's a new technology, that's likely an area where we'll want to come in, take a look, make sure that that's working the way that we hope it is. And we're getting kind of the most bang for our buck out of a new software purchase. Included in this type of review would also, we'd also be taking a look at any pre-employment consent forms, the performance of necessary background check activities, which is top of mind, of course, taking a look at the candidate vetting process. So if we are moving forward with a candidate, how is that communication with that candidate looking versus how is the communication with candidates who are not chosen? How are we documenting why we aren't choosing a candidate to make sure we're protecting ourselves from any type of legal repercussions or disputes that may happen down the road? How we're setting up employees in the system, timeliness to fill positions, all of these areas are kind of included in this type of audit. Instructional materials is next, and I know we may have some additional conversation, it sounds like later today, on this area, but this type of review would be looking at how we're purchasing instruct, purchasing instructional materials, and then, once purchased, how we're tracking inventory, how we're managing inventory. Some of the procedures that we would perform as part of this audit would start with interviews, which is the same for any of the audit areas, but specifically for this one, I'll go into a little bit more detail. We talk, of course, with the purchasing department, Department of Instruction, Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, and a sample of classroom instruct, instructors, instructors as well, to take, get an understanding of, okay, are we competitively soliciting, soliciting instructional materials? If it's exempt, how are we documenting exemptions? How are we sure that we fall within the exemption category? What vendors are we using? If we're not using vendors on the state-approved list, which is allowable, making sure that we meet the requirements per Florida statute, to make sure that we have those types of exempt, exemptions and freedom to choose different types of vendors. And then how are we monitoring our inventory? If there's data that will allow us to take a look at how often we're using inventory, perhaps there's inventory that's been untouched for some time, making sure we can get some sort of conclusion as to why that's the case, and hopefully prevent that from happening in the, in the, in the future. I do want to mention, as the internal audit team, we will not be taking a look at whether the materials themselves are appropriate. We would still be looking at whether instructional materials meet the standards, because that's a compliance, process, and controls-type area. But any type of opinion on whether instructional materials are appropriate, that would kind of be outside of our lane, so just wanted to make sure I, I make that delineation. The last one, and then you will not hear my voice anymore, is student discipline. So here, we're taking a look at compliance with board policies, state, local, and federal regulations related to student discipline, and we're taking a look at the data that we have available at the district for its completeness and accuracy. Specifically, what we're taking a look at is the completeness of referral documentation, the timeliness between an actual incident date and when the incident was documented, verifying compliance with Department of Education rule, specifically 6A, evaluating the accuracy of the discipline plan assigned and reported for each sampled incident. And then we may also perform some additional procedures related to benchmarking student discipline metrics to comparable districts, or within the district from school to school, to try and get some insight as to what our discipline data looks like, if there are discrepancies, why, and that the culture around reporting student discipline is consistent, and we have data that we can rely on to make any sort of decisions down the road. Okay, that was all 10. Now, I will turn it over to you all to answer any questions, go a little bit deeper in any particular topic. We are here to answer any type of question you may have.
Ford, go ahead.
I have.
Go ahead.
And actually, I see Kelly, Randall is in the audience, and I want to ask, when it comes to, it's on page 12, construction, facilities construction, we already, as part of the process, have an outside firm that audits that, is that correct?
Can we just add on to that? Can we talk about, like, what are we outsourcing? Because I thought we heard a little bit of repetitiveness. So it'd be nice to know which ones we're already doing. I know that doesn't just you, but if you could speak to that, anybody else.
That's amazing, yeah. Because if not, we're going to go through, because I have several right now.
Right, right.
Okay.
So actually, that's one of the things that I have questions about. So we have used CarRigs Ingram in the past to, to do audits on our specific construction projects. That was coordinated through the internal auditor's office. So, you know, I'm not sure, honestly, how that process will continue going myself, so.
But that was an ongoing, it wasn't what they do?
No, no, that was separate, from what my understanding is that they are talking about our internal processes in the facilities department.
And we're using another entity?
And then, yes, and then CarRigs Ingram has done the specific audits on projects.
They've done more of the expenditures, they're talking more of the policies and procedures around facility construction.
But I heard similar things. I heard like the punch, the ending and the reconciling the cost of what we said we were going to pay, like that, that all sounds very similar.
Which is, right, which is kind of what CarRigs Ingram has done on each project in the past.
Yeah, they establish those procedures, and then they audit it.
Kind of, he would then keep charging us for those same things, that's another conversation, but the point remains the same.
No, 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 the, the fact is, is if we, as we're narrowing down to two.
Right.
If we already have a.
Right, no, this wouldn't be one of my two either, I agree.
That's, that's where I was going to go with this.
So to add to some of what Kelly has already given us, one of the things that Tom did as a procedure was, he actually looked at each invoice that it was paid out throughout the project. He just has an additional set of eyes. Her staff signs off on all of the invoices and sends them to our staff, and our staff cuts the check and sends it out. But Tom did more of a taking everything in the invoice and going back to the contracts, not at the level that CarRigs and Ingram did, but he did do some procedures there that's currently, right now, not being done. So keep that in mind. And then two.
Excuse me, so I thought that we had the outside of Tom. I didn't know that Tom was looking at these invoices, I thought we took that away from him and moved it to this, whatever that name is.
Yeah, so, so Tom is looking at, Tom was looking at the invoices as we were paying them, whereas CarRigs and Ingram was coming in sometimes six months, a year later, and then performing the audit. So there was a timing difference, and so Tom was really just doing kind of a additional review. I really don't know what all of Tom's procedures were in that review, but he was basically reviewing the invoices as they were being paid throughout the year. He, he may save therefore and wait, and at the end of the year, do three or four invoices at one time, but, but there, he was looking at those invoices prior to that CarRigs and Ingram audit starting. They were doing a much more in-depth, they were looking a lot at things like, you know, what all did they buy with their admin fees and stuff like that, that they would charge, whereas Tom was looking more at, you know, what was the contract, what was the agreement, what was being paid, those kind of things.
So with Fruitland Park, for example, or with Lake Manyola, we have, we don't have any control in place, except we're internally just paying invoices? There is no one that's auditing whether or not they bought the material?
Well.
So our staff actually does a very detailed review, and I will tell you, they are very detailed. And so they actually are confirming on the pay app what each of those invoices is, whether matching it up to the contract, making sure that it does that. My understanding from Tom is, or what Tom was doing, is basically, he was just doing a spot check. So he would go through, and he'd take a look, he'd pull a couple of pay apps, and he'd say, okay, yes, I agree with what our staff was doing. I honestly never heard any kind of response from him saying, oh, you know, I feel like they did something wrong here.
And what does the outside vendor do?
And then the outside vendor goes through, and they go through all of our pay apps, but they also go through information that we don't actually have. So they'll get information from the construction manager.
Like for ours, things like that.
And like laptops and all those that we are going through?
Yes, exactly.
And we give 5% for this, or whatever else they're using?
They'll confirm all of the, the construction manager's actual internal data.
And they still, we still do that with them?
So that was coordinated through Tom's office. I think Scott and I probably need to have a discussion about how those next projects will be.
You'll, you'll have to forgive me, because I'm not, you know, with all of the holidays and, you know, I haven't been all, through all emails and everything, but there was some conversation late November, early December, as they were wrapping up, I believe it's the early coal audit.
Collaborative, well, the collaborative.
Collaborative, so they're, they're still in the process of a couple of audits now. They also have the follow-up audit for the clinics that they were redoing, and I, I believe there may be something else that might be hanging out there.
And Scott, they being the vendor, CarRigs?
CarRigs and Ingram, yes. Yes, sir. So, so there are a couple of things that are just out there that they're wrapping up currently, so once they get wrapped up, we'll bring them to.
We did find value with them. They changed us to our contract to cap some of the expenses.
Seems like to me, the last couple, they kept getting the same gotchas and covering their fee from doing it. I, I was never wild about that guy, that's just my opinion, and that's all that it's worth, but it's, I, I think there, there's value to them. I would just like to see the, the policies and procedures from them be implemented more on the front end, so that he can't come in and say, oh, we got him doing the same thing, and it just happens to cover his fee.
Yeah, and I know we talked about that, like adding some of that language to the contracts, it'd be good to look at that, but.
And if I could, if I could add, I think what we're proposing here, if this was an area that was selected, it's one of the two, right? It would be a combination of what we're discussing, where we would first look at process and procedures on their end, to see kind of what they're doing from a control perspective, and then we would do some sampling of projects and verify pay apps, where it would take and tie, that there's monitoring, that the change orders were approved, if there were any for that project. We would do similar procedures to what, it sounds like, CRI has performed in the past. CRI being CarRigs and Ingram.
And one of the things I thought was important in our conversation, and Mr. Ward and I had met with them, and also looking at these top 10, as we think about the procedures, one of the things that I know the board has really been looking at is, how do we select the architect and the project manager? You know, we went from a committee structure, and who served on the committee, and then now it's a board decision, and I asked them, as part of the procedure, could we look at how we're going through that selection process, and maybe make some recommendations to the board, is, is that the best way to do that? Or is there, based on the fact they've done this audit in other districts, that they found some best practices and best things that they could share? I thought that was important, as we wrap that into possibly the facilities maintenance procedures audit, just as a.
But that seems like a total standalone by itself, which is important.
It could be. That's where I.
Replace one with the other one. I think we got this covered.
Any other questions or comments?
Are there other audits that we already do?
Like the cybersecurity?
Yeah, cybersecurity was.
I kind of wanted to put an X for some of these, like.
Yeah, I, I know that in the past, and Dwayne, I think, he was here, but I think he stepped out. Yeah, we've, we've done some, we've done some testing on that in the past. I don't know.
That's like a state, isn't that required by the state?
Well, we have the Auditor General come, come in every three years, and they do an extensive review. And, you know, one of the things about it, and I think they'll probably can reinforce this better, but IT is such a high risk, that even if you do absolutely everything right today, it's still a high risk. It's just, it is such a potential risk.
If you want to use a line, I think.
But, but I know, and Dwayne, please, come. Bail me out.
Leave it rude for 30 seconds.
Okay, so what was the question?
Don't we already have audits in place?
There are audits.
And tests in place?
There are tests and audits that are put into place, that is absolutely correct. So we have a couple of different layers, like, obviously, the ones, the state comes in. I think one of the things that, the state comes in, like, we do some internal testing. I think one of the things that is always a concern is, cybersecurity is such an evolving threat, to be honest with you. I, it's the one thing that keeps me up at night, right? Like, well, one of the things that keeps me up at night that I'll discuss here. But I guess the thing I was going to say is, is that I, I think whenever we were talking with the internal auditors, I think the reason for this was really, extra eyes on this problem are never going to hurt us if we were going to focus on one thing in IT. I think it's the primary concern. And I am interested, as the district kind of sort of transitions from a midsize to a larger midsize district, if you get what I'm saying, then the amount of systems we have are growing. Obviously, you know, over the last eight years, the technology footprint is growing, and, and you just are looking always to avoid that news story. You should talk about that reputational piece. I think on the cybersecurity front, if we hit a ransomware attack, and everybody goes to log in one day, and it says, give me some Bitcoin, if you get what I'm saying, that's going to be a reputational hit. And so the, the public facing, plus the actual risk to some of our data systems, some of our processes, is pretty severe. So I, I would kind of advocate for it, but I also understand the board has to adjust for all the different, if you got two.
But we're going to pick two.
Yeah, right, so, but would be, I felt like it was our due diligence to put it in the pot, if that makes sense.
But do you feel comfortable if it's not in this pot?
Keeps them up at night.
Keeps me up at night. I guess if you want me to stay up at night a little bit longer, then sure. No, but all kidding aside, like, I mean, I think we have other mechanisms that we could adjust. If it is not picked, then there would be like a plan, a plan B, obviously, to continue with that testing, internal testing, and things of that nature.
Right.
And I'll just add, you know, typically, on our, on our first go-around with proposed top 10, it's usually internal and external penetration testing that we put on the plans. That's not what we put on the plan for this one, it was the maturity assessment, because of the other mechanisms that the district has in place. So this is more of that maturity assessment, like he said, going from midsize to a larger midsize, and taking that into consideration, and all the other factors that they have in place.
Stay there. Yeah, so if it's a maturity plan, and there's some, just some random test, is it possible within the budget, that we get like two and a half?
Yeah, this is, this would probably be out of the list of the top 10, this is one of the smaller scale. one of the smaller scale audits. So we, all the other ones are probably more in the same kind of level of effort range. This one is a smaller level, a level of effort.
So could you pick one that's where it equals? We get this third one combined with another one that you think is going to be a number of hours and?
Depending on what, depending on the three that we're talking about, we can also kind of reimage the scope with some of them as well. So we can take that into consideration.
Building off that, my question to the board would be, does everybody have like a top three in mind so far that they think are important to kind of gauge where we're going to shape this and what's more intense and what's less intense and how we can get there?
Can I ask a more question?
Absolutely. Sure.
Mr. Farnsworth, when you were still in the human resources role, you did, you guys did a lot of changes, if I remember right, in the last two years? Does that make, does that sound?
Just constantly change.
Right, right, right. But I remember you had, you had like taken a really big look at the onboarding process after some things that we went through. That was pretty recent.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, we had a consultant or something.
Yeah, I was bad. The superintendent association actually came in and examined the full process. So onboarding, we feel really good about, especially with some new layers of clearinghouse.
Okay. Thank you. That was all I needed. Thank you.
So may I ask a question?
Please.
Student discipline, is that possibly one that would require the number of hours that could partner with the?
Yeah, that's usually on a more, more level of effort that we have found. We've done this with five other school districts and it's quite a significant level of effort to go through that process.
You say significant or insignificant?
It's significant.
Oh, significant.
It's a lot. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So my comment would be to just start this phase, if you indulge me, the three that stood out to me, maybe it's recency bias, maybe it's not, but I think instructional materials is one to look at. Student discipline and fleet maintenance were the three that kind of seemed to be higher touch points that have not been discussed at as much length as the others. And just to start that discussion, that's where my mind is right now. So I don't know what anybody else thinks about that. I said instructional materials, student discipline, and fleet maintenance and management.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Go ahead. I'm listening. I, I'm listening.
Mr. Dodd, you go?
Well, I would have, I would have echoed your instructional materials and student discipline, but I think my third one would have been contract compliance.
Okay.
I have not.
You know, and, and for me, I just, in all the instructional materials conversation, this goes back to the last ELA adoption where I don't think there ever was a signed contract.
Okay.
And, you know, costs us a half a million dollars a year in recurring costs. And so thinking about if there is truly a lack of software on this, or how do we maintain that? Granted, I know we have new legal counsel who is stellar, right? But, you know.
I lost eye contact.
I think that we do a lot of contracts in the, in the district and it seems like there'd be a, a process that should be looked at there to make sure that we've got a, a good one.
Yeah, I, I'd agree with that. And I'd say we can certainly make a case for all 10 of these. And by that same token, we've got a large county that we're running buses and seven fueling stations, everything else. So they're all important.
Yeah.
And I agree with you on that one as well. And I know we're really picking two to start. I said three, kind of the third to get an idea of those overlaps. But no, I think that's just as important as that one.
So, and so just to understand the timeline though, we're talking two would be this current fiscal year, and then come July, we're picking two more?
Or whatever the budget is.
So we're essentially doing four a calendar year for starting now for the standpoint, or three to four, depending on the intensity of that audit?
I know we keep saying two, and I, I, based on the conversation before, we talked about, you know, if we kept the internal audit cost to be about the same as what it was. But again, board members, you have full control over budget and you guys can increase or decrease that as you see fit. So.
I'd rather keep it similar.
Yeah, I'd rather keep it similar as well.
For me, just to throw into the mix, competitive procurement is a big area, large expense area, one that I know Ollie has been, and Scott, y'all been working to reform already. And it may not be hurtful to get some eyes on it, be helpful in that, changing how that process works.
Yeah.
And there's already work in progress, don't misunderstand.
And, and when we were having a conversation superintendents office, we also talked about, could we, could we also answer that question about, is the best way that we do our architects and contractors, the format that we're currently doing?
That could follow.
We could probably roll that into that one.
We could have gone under either one.
That's a natural. Follow either one with.
The contract compliance or competitive procurement.
Facilities or construction or.
Well, in the procurement process, that's where that, those RFI or RFQs and all that business all come from. So it seems a natural that we're putting that one.
Would you look at the procurement process, would it be appropriate to maybe push the instructional material look into the procurement process? Because when I read about the strategies for the procurement on instructional materials, it says, we will evaluate procurement processes to verify compliance with district policies and applicable regulations, review inventory management material or practices, to evaluate active records and identify any underutilized or excess materials, a sample of purchased instructional materials. So that last one was the only thing that seemed outside of the procurement, a consistency with the procurement processes. And my concern with that, and I didn't, like this was a skim through and like thinking about the things, but with instructional materials, when they're talking about, are we actually using, underusing, undercoordinated approaching to purchasing, district level oversight, lack of detailed spend reports? That seems expenditure related, not necessarily instructional materials related.
Right.
I mean, you know what I'm saying? It's a, it's a purchase.
It's in the procurement component.
Right.
The, the only caveat to that being inventory management, right? That's an important component. Is, are these instructional materials tracked? So the utilization of them?
I just feel like we did that.
Well, I think, I think the, the wondering about this one is that they're going to 40 different school sites, right? And being received by some school-based person in each site who may be administrator, maybe somebody else the administration has appointed. And, and storage space is often a challenge in those. And they end up in 12 different, you know, work rooms potentially. And so, so I can see why this exists in a, in an item of itself. But from the instructional material side, I guess, I guess the one component I'm maybe not as excited about or not as interested in is what is the standards alignment of that material? Because the state already puts forth a number that says, this material is this percentage aligned with the standard.
Right.
So maybe you can, you know, keep that piece off.
Yeah, I, I think what's going to be the biggest level of effort here for instructional materials, and Ava and Wise, correct me if I'm wrong, is really taking that deep dive into the individual schools, right? Taking a sample of the schools, how are they utilizing the materials? I think the procurement of it and the compliance component are smaller level of efforts when it comes to that. But it's a piece of the puzzle. You want to make sure that you're just taking and tying with it, but really taking that dive. Because for our understanding is the risk is what are the schools utilizing?
That was my concern. That's what I actually got of it first. And when I looked at the strategy, I'm like, maybe not. I don't know that I want an outside industry coming in and saying, yes, you are using these materials and you need to. Like, what are we going to do with that? If they come back and say, we saw that 60% of your teachers aren't using this instructional material and we're obligated by the state to use them, what are they using? What do we do with that? I don't want to come back and say, okay, now you have to use this material. I mean, we already have an instructional, we have, we have a designated core curriculum that students are using, but we also have schools that need additional things, that, that are purchasing and using different things. And so when we look at the outcome of this, if they come back and say, schools are not using their instructional materials, you know, I guess the next question would be, what are they using? Which was a different audit, a software audit.
And we have people.
So, so I think, I think, you know, you're, that's a very valid question, one that I think is going to come back from this is, okay, so now what do you do with that information? So every year, you know, just mathematically, I got a lot of kids, right? So they, they've got a lot of teachers. And so some kid is going to bring home a pile of unused consumables every year. Happens every year. And, and then oftentimes, there's a little note that says, I promise we really did teach social studies this year. We just used something different or we did it on the, on the, on the Chromebook or whatever it is.
Right.
And, and so, so that, I guess the wondering that once we get that information is, should we continue buying this? If not, then what are the, what are, maybe we don't need the printed in this case, or maybe we need the, you know, the digital, was it adequate? Or if they're not using it and we expect them to be using it, well, then what's the follow-up from the instructional leader in the building that says, hey, how are you teaching social studies this year? Because why are all the books coming home blank? What, what did you, you want to pay teachers?
Everything you just said, we already have that data. We should be at that point.
Right.
Do we have that data?
Well, we should. And we should have people that.
You have it and I have it. I think other people have it.
So I think we know that there, I guess, I guess why this one is on the list is because if we have that quantity or somehow quantified in our hands, we say, look, here is the data. But, you know, just anecdotally, I mean, we're two people, but if it's happening in our households, it's probably happening in others. And so.
It's not happening in mine.
Yeah, right.
Or mine.
Leave you alone. Okay.
I just, I wonder if then you wouldn't shift your focus somewhere else.
Right, right. Because you already know it's an issue, as long as somebody has the data to go adjust it.
I guess my second question would be, is it an issue? Like, are we seeing results in our schools that we don't want as a result of them not using the instructional materials that we purchased? I love what you said about like, then why are we purchasing them? I think we're statutorily mandated to purchase some of them, but there is a part of me that thinks we waste a crap ton of money on instructional materials that we're required to purchase. And so I, let's go rogue. I, that's fine, right? But I just don't want our teachers listening to think, oh, now the board's talking about, I have to use this specific material or there's going to be a consequence. Like if, I don't know, I'll be quiet. Number talks isn't in our curriculum and I want my teachers to use it. Like, that's a, that's a thing, right? So I just don't know what kind of rabbit hole we're going to jump in with some.
But is this relevant in audit? It sounds, as I'm listening to y'all speak, who are vested, that it would be something that internally superintendent, you could have your people.
Exactly.
Your area directors and then talk, and then bring it data back without a full-blown audit.
Agreed.
Does that, does that make sense?
Yes.
And the conversation was totally about cost and how much, as we're thinking about the fact that we don't have enough to cover the next adoption, how do we identify what teachers want? Not mandating that they use anything particular, but what are you, what do you want? And is there, rather than purchasing everything, are there things that we absolutely statutorily are to provide? And then are there other supplementals that teachers would rather have that we could invest in that might cost less money? So that, it was all about cost. It had nothing to do with compliance.
Which seems a little different. Maybe we define our objectives a little bit differently.
But is that something they can tell us or we can tell ourselves?
Yeah.
Can we sort that out ourselves?
Can we get those answers?
We could probably get any of these answers that we want.
But there's some that you want some outside eyes. This all sounds very internal.
I guess I've got a question just about the scope of work. Okay. So at some point, so let's say we pick one of these things. We, we go with the three that I chose and then we. I don't know. Okay. So then, then we say, okay, go run with competitive procurement, for example. All right.
Which is a great one.
I know. Here's your example. I'm going to try and win some points here in influence lately. So, so then, do you come back to us and say, okay, now that you've chosen competitive procurement, we're going to define this scope and the school board is going to look at that scope and buy off on that scope before you run and go do it? Okay.
Correct.
All right. Because we don't have, you know, this internal audit committee anymore who used to look at the scopes. And so basically, we are now the audit committee.
We would bring forward a scope of work that's way more defined than this scope that you're just seeing. We would take the feedback we're hearing, right? If you say instructional materials, for, for example, is the one we want, but we want it focused on cost and we, we want to avoid X, Y, and Z, our scope of work that we bring forward will, will include those, those comments.
Okay. So maybe knowing that, I wonder if that gives a little comfort to what we would pick. If we picked instructional materials, we would define the components to be the cost-related and we could, you know, always direct the superintendent and her staff to say, hey, we'd really love to know more about this other piece. And.
Or you take the competitive procurement, understanding our concern about instructional materials and you start modeling.
I want to piggyback onto you though, because if I remember correctly, and listen, y'all, I got three kids and like, it's a thing. If I remember right, there was an adoption where 50% of the staff wanted this one and 50% of the staff wanted this one. And I was told we can't do that. I was told we cannot do that. And so that's a procurement thing. Why can we not? It was at the distribution of the materials? Was it, how do we get it to schools? Was it the cost? That would be, that's back in the procurement bucket. And maybe procurement with an emphasis on instructional materials. I keep.
Well, and we had some times where they ordered and we didn't get the books in at the time. And, and so as part of the process, somebody forgot to place an order or something, some whatever.
I just want to clarify that when you said that was the procurement thing, that was a purchasing decision? That wasn't the procurement department?
Oh, sorry. I'm so sorry, Ms. Farnsworth.
I just, I didn't want everybody to start, you know, calling up Ollie and yelling at him saying, hey, why did you do this? It would have been Ollie anyway. But, but anyway, no, that was a decision that was made that was out, outside of procurement. Most of the procurement that's processed, they're purchasing from the Florida School, whatever warehouse.
Right, right, right.
So it's, it's not, you know, they don't have to go out and get contracts and everything out. It's when they go outside of that box, when they have to get procurement involved and get contract and everything.
Whoever said no to 50/50? And now we're talking about what do the teachers want and what can we buy? Those people need to get together on this audit. So we can.
Well, I don't, I don't necessarily disagree with you. I just want to clarify that that wasn't a procurement department decision. That was.
I didn't hear until today. We can go outside of that Florida, whatever.
True.
And, and maybe that's a way for us to lower costs.
There, there's some, it's not 100% flexibility. There, you cannot go out and just buy whatever you want to buy. There are statutes to say. But there, there is some language in there that allows you some flexibility for those supplemental type things. And, and again, your textbook people can speak to this a lot better than I can. But, you know, it's not just the old days of buying textbooks and getting boxes of textbooks coming into the schools. There's, there's all of the consumables that come along with it today that we're buying. There's all of the electronic format that we're purchasing. And, you know, a lot of that adds a lot of question because a lot of those just get bought. I'm not saying that they're getting wasted, but they're getting bought and then they're supplied to the schools. And then if the teachers are having to go out and add additional supplemental materials to that, then I think, you know, that definitely needs to be.
Who is buying them right now?
The district.
Who in the district? Is it purchasing?
The instructional materials.
Ollie? It comes under Ollie?
No, instructional materials.
Under instructional materials.
Yeah, we, 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 we place the orders. They, we do the, the POs and all those kind of things, but all that decision, all of that's done because it's not required a contract. It's done through the instructional materials department. Because it's limited by the state.
And where are the controls for that?
They still run through all of our controls. They still have to have budget, it's up to POs. We still get invoices that are signed off and pay the invoices and all that. So it still goes through all of our internal controls. But there's not an RFP or RFQ process for those type of things. It would be exempt by statute anyway.
But you can't research and if there's a story about Joe here and a story about Joe here, and either one of them are approved, who's checking which one's less? We can use either one. That kind of, there's none of that.
Yeah, the, the, we don't weigh into a lot of that because that's done by the instructional materials committee. And those decisions are made and brought forward to you. The conversation's going to happen as soon as this meeting's over. So that's really, and I'm not going to say cost does or does not have an impact on those decisions, but, but it's primarily on what instructional materials we believe serves our students the best. Of course, I'm kind of speaking for them when I say that, but I would assume.
I'm sure that's truthful.
Yeah. I narrowed it down.
So if I may, why do we think about student discipline as one of the two?
They only gave one and we haven't heard from these other two yet.
Well, I like, I like just going off of what you guys are saying, but this discipline one also gave me some concern only with the outcomes of that as well.
Correct.
There were some things that if you come back and say, XYZ, I worry on one hand that you're, you're putting yourself in a box and you're, you're having to react the same way on every instance, which definitely is.
But from, yeah, from my experience so far, we have no box whatsoever. Like, we've got two similar sized high schools where last year, one had 400 referrals and one had 4,000 referrals. And how are we tracking these instances and escalating things that can lead to other events? And with the, the state's focus on safety and security, and they've done this how many times over? It did it for Volusia last year, I think. I think it's critical that we get on that one sooner than later.
But stop your thought right there, what you've just said.
Yep.
So you have the information and why can't we internally come up with a solution to that?
And we have.
Why do we need someone like them to tell us what you just said?
So all of the data, we think, if we look at what they're looking at, which they're they're going to look at our CESSR data, we look at that. We have a team now, so we did some restructuring this year, if you'll remember. We added the folks from student discipline in with school safety and security. They meet once a week, twice a week, three times a week. They're constantly looking at CESSR data. They're looking at all of the things that we've talked about being concerns. They have a lot of different controls and systems in place. It's an incredible group that are supporting schools and I've had principals tell me that they are feeling so much more supported in this area this year by having a larger team of people. Our ESE team is at the table. We've, you know, we've added some program specialists there to really work on this. So, that would be one I would like to park because I do think we have a lot of great systems that we've just implemented that we're already seeing results on. So, I agree that that would be one that I think internally we're already very much aware of because it does have huge implications as they found in the overview on teacher retention and all the things that we're working to resolve. So, that would be one that I, again, I think they'd be looking at the exact same data we're already looking at.
And I can, I mean Tyler, I was going to say that on one hand, that's my huge concern. The other hand is exactly what you said. Like, I can see both sides of that spectrum, so I appreciate your insight.
But I don't think this falls off the list, right? So, it's going to stay.
Yeah.
Because we can only pick two and a half, two and a quarter, whatever.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to say something about student discipline. I am very concerned and you know that from our conversation. And I hear what everyone is saying, but I also know that student discipline controls a lot of the climate of a school. It controls the academic focus. It controls basically what does and does not happen. And if you go out into our communities, the perception is that we have a discipline problem. Now, whether or not that's true, I'm not sure, but I'm sure based on what Tyler just said, there is definitely some inconsistencies in whoever's handing out the discipline. You know, you'd have to get into the racial, socioeconomic and all that stuff makeup of the schools to determine whether similar sized schools. But to have that vast, large number of difference in discipline is a concern. I think it is important that we know how it was coded. We need to know consequences. All of those things are important. I applaud this committee work. I think there's a possibility it could do a lot, but, you know, I haven't seen any of those results, so I don't know what's happening with that. I don't know about the discussions, but I have a real concern if it just gets parked because it's greatly contributing to our losing of teachers. It's greatly contributing to the anxiety of our parents. It's greatly contributing to the anxiety of our bus drivers. Discipline is important, so I don't want us to, you know, just kind of park it in, because sometimes there are hard things that have to be dealt with and discipline is one. We can't look over that one.
The word park was merely that it not be in the first round.
Okay.
That we push forward. And from what I'm hearing is that the district has been listening to the teachers and administrators and so that meeting once a month is just, from my seat, is given a chance.
Okay, and I don't have a problem with that. I would like to know exactly what they're finding and what kind of changes are being made. It's kind of hard to speak to things when people are telling you about these quote incidences they seem to be aware of and all you can say is, wow, that happened? If that happened, that's a problem. So, maybe there needs to be more conversation about what's happening and what the committee's doing.
Could that be a workshop topic for the future? Is it something that we could put into a presentation? I mean, without getting specific to student levels or it needs to be a closed session, but just something around what we're doing?
Let us
Yeah, I mean, we
Have some conversation and see what
Absolutely, yeah. But I agree that it's something to continue to monitor.
So, this one was on my top three list originally because I'm just thinking about how many times we've heard Elizabeth or Kathy step up there and talk about how teachers are feeling unsupported and discipline is one of the major challenges for them. And so, I'm interested in knowing if the changes you've made this year, superintendent and staff, if that is moving the needle in that or are they still feeling like this, you know, there's a lot more ground to come? So, I guess, that being said, I think I'm willing to park it not being the first two to give some time for those new strategies to kind of play out. And I'd be interested in hearing if that's still, if it's moving the needle or not. And then, if not, then I think we need to
Agree.
I mean, because
We've got 10. We've got to narrow it down to like two.
Yeah, this is all great discussion that's taking place and what I'm enjoying hearing is all these processes that you have in place, right? But the point of internal audit is we come in and we test those processes. So, that's great that the district has a lot of new HR processes in place. These processes in place are student discipline, the instructional material. That's great. So, for internal audit is to utilize us to be able to come in and look at these various topic areas and just going back, you know, these are, right now, these are the inherently top 10 that we came up with.
So, when do y'all run a BOGO sale, you know?
And I think that obviously recognizing the threat, as y'all did, and the district is reacting to it, there's also something to be said, in my opinion, to let these new initiatives take hold and then you come in and look at them. Rather than looking at brand new initiatives, you're going to go, yeah, there's not, you don't have any data to support whether it's working or whether they're following it or whatever. So, I think that that would immediately, I don't, I would push forward. I don't think parks may be a great word, but push forward those reviews.
Yeah, and this top 10, let's say, let's say it stays the same, you know, when we're looking down, looking at it down the road, it's going to take a couple of years still to get through these top 10, especially with the budget allocation. So, just keep that in mind as well. And again, what, like you had just said, that the various initiatives that are going on, when is the right time for us to come in and look at some of these areas?
How long would you anticipate the instructional materials audit taking? And I'm only asking like in the timeframe of, we were talking about instructional materials after this meeting. So, I can't, would we have the results back before it's time to make decisions this time around or would we be looking for the '25, '26 adoption?
We typically say that a typical internal audit can take anywhere from six to 10 weeks. We're finding that our timelines have been, for some reason, these past four years, four to five years, the timeline has gotten longer, right? And it goes to the availability of the people that we're working with, the availability of the information. Your team is wearing a lot of different hats, so making sure that we're coming in at the right time too, when would they have all of these other things going on as well? So, we try to say that we can have draft findings, which within six to 10 weeks. Again, it's very dependent on a lot of factors at B.
Do we have that timeframe? You know, I know it's statutorily driven, but like if you back up from this year's instructional materials, do we have that? Is that in the next presentation? What it is? Is it in six weeks, I imagine?
I think we're going to vote on the materials on Monday, but they're not going to order them until April 1st, right? So
They don't care about ordering. They're looking at processes.
Yeah, but we were talking about like purchasing them or not.
From the time we give you a go, are you going to start immediately?
It'll be dependent on, you know, getting a kickoff meeting scheduled and the availability of staff, but we are prepared to start as soon as we need to be.
And getting that SOW executed.
So, then does it sound like instructional materials in some capacities in our top two?
Not mine.
Could be, which multiverse you want to talk about.
It could be, but we obviously have to see the scope of work.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I wasn't, I literally crossed cybersecurity off, but after listening to Mr. Weeks, I went
I know, right? They said short term, so like if Mr. Weeks felt comfortable with an overview and some kind of like cursory report, I'm good with it.
Oh, could that be paired with the other one?
That's what, yeah, that's what we were talking about. Just find a pair or two to get
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Cybersecurity one's going to be paired.
But
So, do we have a concern about fleet maintenance?
I mean, I do.
Tyler does.
What?
I just think we've got such a vast fleet on both the white fleet and the yellow fleet side and we cover such an extreme amount of area every day driving around these lakes to get kids to and from school, that how are we best utilizing that? What are we doing on the maintenance side on making buses last longer? I know we're got, we've gotten on a better schedule of when we're purchasing buses and following through those. We've got some very old white fleet vehicles still on the road. They still work, so I'm good with it. But what are we doing on that process and procedure side? Because it is a large expenditure that is quite variable. So, I mean, if we're crossing off HR because we've done it, if we're crossing off facilities because we've done it, what are we keeping on for now? Just trying to
Contract compliance.
Keep this conversation
I like contract compliance too.
I'm very concerned how we buy tires.
Noted. So, by the same token, on contract compliance, with all the work that Ollie's done and all the work that Gray Robinson has continued to do, we can do this for every single one of these topics.
We can.
Superintendent, which ones are your topics? Like, which of these do you feel like you need an outside set of eyes to advance that maybe based on the workloads of your people that, you know, they probably couldn't?
Great question.
Thank you.
So, contract compliance, I think, is definitely at the top of my list to include the procedures for the selection of the architect project management. So, it's kind of, kind of combining some aspects of the facility's construction piece along with the contract procurement piece. So, we know procurement's been something that we've really been working on. One of the things that they talked about was, and we've heard from some of our vendors, and we actually hired someone to kind of look at some of our communication techniques in that area, because vendors would say, well, I don't know anything about vendor link. How do I get into that system? How do we better communicate what's, when a bid is out there and those types of things that they can look at and see if there's better ways we can do that one. So, that was at the top of my list.
That's in the procurement side, right? What you just said.
Correct. So, that's the contract, the
Competitive procurement and contract compliance are two different
I think what you're describing, Superintendent, might fall into the competitive procurement scope. When we develop a full scope, it would probably be easier to fall it into the competitive solicitation. Contract compliance would be us looking at specific contracts, high dollar contracts, revenue generating contracts. Contracts, we would work with the superintendent or CFO to identify which contracts meet that threshold. We usually select a sample of one or two contracts and we'll look at the contract from A to Z and make sure all the provisions are being met, including service level expectations.
What I'm hearing is
Competitive procurement. That's the one. Yes, I'm sorry. Did I, I think I said
You said contract.
Yes, yes.
So, that's number one.
I do think there are some aspects of contract compliance that also go into that procurement as well.
Hundred percent.
So, that was, that was my number one and I also am interested in the scope of work on instructional materials because I think that's a timely conversation and one that we've all, but again, I think it does come, them coming back to describe what does, what does that now look like based on the conversation? And then the further conversation with our instructional materials team.
Maybe we can kind of recap too. We've had a lot of discussion on instructional material. So, let's kind of recap what the concerns are, the highest level of concerns for instructional material.
You're asking a question?
I'm asking a question, yeah.
We'd like them to focus on from an instructional material audit side of things.
I think I heard the superintendent say like, what is it that they want? What is the instructional material they feel most supported by in their work?
Meaning teachers.
Right. To challenge a question.
But the threat that I heard y'all mention is that are the materials being used?
Right, so what do they want if they are? Right, right, right.
Right, right. And so, as we're moving forward and we've already seen that we're going to have a shortfall between what's the budgeted number, so we've got to be very careful of what we're buying.
Right.
And the question I'm going to ask in the next session is, is what are the trends? Are we, can we get away from books and killing trees and it being more digital since all our kids have devices?
Shot my book reading heart.
I know, right?
Just so you know, Bill, I just want you to hear me say that.
I know, I know. What Mindy said last night as we were talking about this, she goes, I still, she reads every day and she reads from a book. She tried the Kindle, couldn't do it, but we're old. That's all our kids do now.
You just put me in your demographic. Oh, my God. I'm just kidding. I am just kidding. That was a joke. Mindy's in my demographic. I'm just saying. But, but, yes, okay. Yes, all the questions.
Well, in terms of the utilization, I think there's, it's multi-pronged. One is the, is it something, a resource that the teachers wanted or was it the right platform they wanted, print versus digital? But then there's also the component of can they find it in their school? You know, I mean, 40 different school sites, it's a lot of different inventory processes or locations and I think our instructional materials department is largely understaffed to be able to look at a fraction of those schools. You know, so I don't, I don't know. I don't know.
But I didn't realize until this meeting that we actually had two different areas purchasing. So, would it make sense to combine procurement with material?
So, we're just picking one audit, but we're putting six things in it.
Competitive procurement wouldn't include instructional materials. They don't have to be competitive.
No, 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 I wasn't saying throw it in this audit.
Yeah.
What I was saying was that rather than have two separate departments buying things, or we have one that buys everything and then we have one that buys instructional materials, wouldn't we have the one that really is a specialist at purchasing to
Just to clarify on that, so
So, the procurement department does two things. One, it does the RFPs, RFQs and everything else, the solicitation. And then they also handle the contract and everything else on the other side too. Two different stages. They still handle everything on the second stage. There's just no RFP, RFQ process for instructional materials because it's, one, it's exempt and two, the majority of it's restricted to the warehouse.
The list.
The Florida
Yeah.
textbook deposit. Thank you.
We have a person that is sending those purchase orders and requests out, right?
They're still running through the same processes. There are all other purchase orders.
Outside of the procurement department?
They still go through
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. They still programmatically, they do all the paperwork just like everybody else does. It's just a decision to go and the contract and all that, because it's so restricted by the state, they don't have to do a lot of that. Procurement's not involved in a lot of that decision because they don't, it's not required or it's restricted.
Right.
Sorry.
No, you're good. And on that note, not to be critical, but to offer another perspective, I'm not as wild about competitive procurement if the concern is around vendor link usage and people knowing that bids are out. Because I mean, between vendor link, bid sync, whatever else, I'd say 80% plus of public entities in the state of Florida use one of those softwares. I think it's on our staff to communicate that more effectively that, hey, these are out there, here's how you log in for vendor link if you don't already, but if you're looking to work with us, I would hope you already have a vendor link login because then you're not doing work with anybody else.
Eighty percent of people we contacted did not know anything about it. We already did that upfront.
Then they're not doing any work with government entities in Florida because that's how nearly all of them
I don't care about them doing business with Florida entities. I care about them doing business with like kind of schools to give them opportunity.
Agreed.
That was the out, that was the out
Yeah, I hear you.
Out horse, but out.
Yeah. But if it's just on communicating better how to put people to vendor link, I don't think we need an audit for that.
That's not what we, I don't think that's, I didn't see that.
No, that was the example.
Well, that wasn't what was all in here.
But that's all just a baseline. Here's what we can do, but we're going to change this 85 ways because we've
We 100% have outdated processes. 100% we have that because we're working on it right this minute in procurement.